It being of the time, then we would ask Councilman Airwood to give our invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Our heavenly Father, we come to you this afternoon and ask you to lead us in this interview and let us ask the right questions and do the right thing for the county and make the right kind of judgments. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The first item on our agenda is Code Section, Executive Session under Code Section 30-4-70, subsection A, subsection one, which is a discussion of employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, or release of employee, a student, or a person regulated by a public body, or the appointment of a person to a public body. However, if an adversary hearing involving the employer or client is held, the employee or client has the right to demand that that hearing be conducted publicly. Nothing contained in this item shall prevent the public body in its discretion from deleting the names of other employees or clients whose records are submitted for use at the hearing. Is there a motion that we go into executive session? Motion by Mr. Hipps, second by Mr. Shealy is their discussion. Hearing done. All in favor by show of hands. Opposed? Likewise, it carries unanimously. We will now move into executive session.
Conversation please, we need to come out of this meeting. We have a motion by Ms. Airwood, second by Mr. Livingston, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, opposed likewise, we are now out of executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Mr. Livingston, I heard them both that on the end, is there discussion? All in favor by show of hands, opposed likewise, we stand adjourned from this for four minutes and we will go back into our regular scheduled meeting. Thank you. Sorry about that, we had to come out of that meeting, I apologize. Here and a part of their county government, we're going to have our invocation and our pledge and we're going to ask Mr. Hip to take care of those items for us.
Please stand, bow your heads, Heavenly Father, we ask that you direct us so that we make decisions that are pleasing to you and that are in the best interest for the citizens of Newberry County. We ask these things in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Let me make allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Again, we welcome you all here. Item number one on the agenda is our additions or deletions of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, since there was an issue with a couple of council members not receiving the consent agenda with those meetings minutes, I would ask that we postpone the consent agenda until our April 20th meeting.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Hip that we move the consent agenda items to the April 26th, 20th, I guess it is, meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Reader, is there discussion? All in favor by show of hands and opposed likewise. Any other additions or deletions to the agenda? Is there a motion that we approve the agenda as modified? Motion by Mr. Hip, second by Mr. Shealy, discussion? All in favor by show of hands, opposed likewise, also carries unanimously. Item number two on the agenda is public appearances. The first is our lovely and honorable Clerk of Court, Ms. Beth Falk.
First of all, I'm going to let you know I'm not asking for a thing. This is just, this is just information and some of you'll be happy. Starting July the first, our land records will be going on, wait.
Wonderful.
So, they will be able to see the indexes starting from July of 1983, but to view the documents, it'll be October of 2003. So, we'll be glad to help anybody if they have any problems or anything, but that's just what I wanted to let you all know.
Thank you so much, I know that that's been a long time coming.
It has, and it's been, and we're kind of worried about it, that's why I kept putting it off and Jackie did too, because we had a lot of documents now that have social security numbers, birth dates and stuff like that.
Yes ma'am.
And we read, we do redact, but the only thing that I know right now that's not going to be on are the, people are filing death certificates now and they will not be viewed on there. And then private attorneys, because I figure, you know, if somebody needs that bad enough, they need certified copies, they can come in and get it.
Yes ma'am, we appreciate your efforts to get that done.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next is our Honorable Coroner, Laura Neese.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I wish I was here not asking for money, so bear with me. I'm here again for the fifth year in a row begging and pleading for a full-time position to add to our office. Is this on? As you can see, I did a quick PowerPoint, I know that you love my PowerPoints. This is hard to see, but just to give you an outline, Coroner's Office duties consist of at least 14 different areas during their investigation. This does not include also, the state has now mandated that the Coroner's Office be the head of child fatality review boards. And if you haven't known in the past several years, our child fatality unfortunately has increased. We've just had two in the past two weeks. So, unfortunately, those are starting to become more common. With those child fatality review boards, I have to coordinate with General Lee SLED, the forensic pathologist, the law enforcement agency that is investigating the death, my office, forensic child pediatrician out of Columbia and various other, DSS and various other agencies. So, that can be a task in itself trying to coordinate just to do one or two reviews a month. We're also tasked now with additional duties with the new de-hec BRT and death certificate system. Now, everything of course is online, they say it's supposed to make it easier and quicker, but it definitely doesn't make it easier or quicker a lot of the times. We used to be able just to fax or email over a paper to de-hec and allow them to update our death certificates, now that that falls back on us. So, once we get a complete cause of death for a death certificate, we have to go back in and fill out and update all that paperwork. Call volume wise, we have increased, we saw an exponential increase in 2020. Of course, we feel that's due to COVID, we kind of came down a little bit in 2021, but we are seeing a current increase in overdose related deaths. Our current call volume right now is 127, which is about a death per day, but that that is not all scene response deaths, that's also phone deaths and hospital deaths that we also are tasked to take care of. Over the past five years, there's been a huge turnover in the Coroner's Office. The past five years, I've gone, I've had 15 different employees come in and work and I've used training money to educate these individuals and dispersed over $4,000 in training budget just for have, to have them resign within two or three months. And the reason that most people were resigning is because the demands of the job weren't worth the pay. Training requirements, there's two different training requirements, we use the Death Investigation Academy and we also use the American Board of Mental Legal Death Investigation. The second one comes later when we're able to retain employees, because you have to have two years of job experience in order to sit for that exam in that class, and I've only had one person so far stay long enough in order to sit for that, for that position. And then he too resigned due to family issues and other job requirements. As I've stated several times in the past, in 2019 when we had our accreditation visit, retired Coroner Murphy from Las Vegas and at that time Coroner Watts stated that the, one of the reviews and concerns that they had were the staffing patterns in the office. They, at that point in time, we had handled 340 cases, which as you know now is more of a lower number. We're continuously increasing our cases and having only one-time personnel, which would be me and at that time two-time part-time employees, left a lot of juggling for any type of leaving, leave, job stress, any type of surgery leave. This past November, I had to have required shoulder surgery, I had to have a deputy, I had to reach out to the Coroner's Association in order to see if I could have coverage in the county. York County sent a deputy coroner for a 24-hour shift and then retired Coroner Gary Watts came in and covered three or four shifts for me while I was out. I find that a big issue and almost an embarrassment to the, to the office that I had to ask for outside help from the county because I don't have anybody else full-time to help with those type of issues. I did a comparison of other counties, these are the counties that fall in our Class Four of the Counties of Associations. As you can see, the only one that really, call volume wise that we are in line with is Chesterfield. And as of right now, they have one full-time coroner, one full-time deputy coroner, and then one part-time deputy coroner. Their population is a little bigger than ours, however, as far as call volumes, we kind of stay in the same range with them. I'm sorry, did you have any questions on that one? Good? Okay. What I'm asking for is a one full-time position salary-wise, I'm requesting a salary of $35,000. This is also with the fringe benefits, with the fringe benefits totaling $31,491, so the total salary and fringe benefits for this position would be $61,491. And to keep the two additional part-time deputy coroners that bumped their salaries up to 15 a year, right now, they're averaging 10, one is at 10 and the other two are around 12. And what I was thinking about doing is taking one of the part-time deputy coroners and put them in a full-time position, so if that was something that you guys granted for salary-wise. So, my total requested budget for this year is, for personnel, is $1,015,745. My current budget is at 80,80,445, so the difference, and this does not include the fringe benefits, would be $35,000. Any questions?
Any questions for the coroner? Here you go. Thank you so very much. Next on our agenda is Solicitor David Stumbo.
Thank you, and I was just resist the urge to call you Chief Deputy, Mr. Chairman now, instead of Mr. Chief Deputy, Members of Council. Thank you all so much for giving me an opportunity tonight, I see many familiar faces that I've addressed here over the last 10 years since I've been your solicitor, I've been honored to serve as, as your Chief Prosecutor for this circuit in Newberry County for the last almost 10 years, and I see some new faces as well. Thank you all for giving me this opportunity, it's an honor to serve you all and work with our fine law enforcement agencies, including Sheriff Foster and his guys, the municipal departments, the Highway Patrol, SLED, the other uh, the municipal departments, the highway patrol, SLED, uh, the other, uh, agencies that produce criminal cases. Uh, just for those of y'all who aren't familiar, uh, solicitor's office, we handle every single case that is produced by these law enforcement agencies. If it carries over thirty days, it's in general sessions court. Uh, as Chairman Well knows, uh, we have a, a pretty massive job to say grace over with the amount of cases, uh, that come into our office from all these fine agencies. And we have great law enforcement in Newberry County. We are blessed with well-trained, strong law enforcement officers that make good cases. I can't say that everywhere else in the Eighth Circuit. Uh, I won't call anybody else out specifically, but this county, uh, produces great law enforcement officers and great cases, and there's no question about that. So when we go to trial here and take, uh, those that are a danger to our community to court and try those cases, we're blessed to have good cases to work with. Um, the, the bottom line, our request, and I know it's probably part of your packet tonight, uh, there is no place that COVID and the, the, uh, the ripple effects of the COVID pandemic took a wrecking ball more to than the criminal justice system. Um, prior to the COVID pandemic and all those shutdowns for about eighteen months, we were essentially, uh, dead in the water with court. We had some virtual court and some other stuff to, to handle a few cases, but for the most part, uh, our great law enforcement agencies were still going out and fighting crime and making arrests. And a lot of those cases, we weren't able to process. Before the COVID pandemic, we were running in Newberry County because we had worked very hard to get to this number, around four hundred cases were pending on the general sessions docket at any given time. And that was very low. Generally, we were, uh, Chairman, we were getting the cases to trial within about, you know, usually less than a year, uh, which was great. Newberry County kind of led the way as far as the Eighth Circuit. Today, I just ran our numbers an hour before I came over here. We're at one thousand five hundred and four pending warrants in Newberry. And honestly, uh, y'all, it's not because we quit working hard, it's because court shut down and we had a, a hard time just getting cases to trial. Juries weren't able to be impaneled. Uh, the judges weren't holding court. Uh, so we have tripled the, the cases on the Newberry General Sessions docket in basically two year, a two-year time period. We're about March of this year, two years out from those shutdowns. Now, we're starting to work back and cut into that, little bit at a time, little bit at a time. But the, the problem is if we don't put manpower to those cases, there is absolutely no way we can really slash that backlog as effectively as I would like as solicitor. Quite honestly, I don't want to have to tell my investigators like Robert Dennis and, and, uh, municipal agencies like, uh, Chief Sinclair up in Whitmire and other places, that their cases can't get to trial, you know, in ten to twelve months like we used to do it. Uh, tried a homicide case where a seven-year-old was tragically murdered here in Newberry that Sheriff's Office worked and did a great job on. It was one of the first cases we were able to try after we opened that back up for business. Um, and there's many others behind it. I can tell you, we have homicide cases, shootings have increased. Y'all, the, the COVID pandemic increased crime all over the country, not just here in Newberry, but Newberry's not immune to that. So we have more cases and about the same resources to work with. My request this year, and just to let you know what I've done with some of the other counties, Greenwood and Lawrence County, both are giving us a three-year essentially grant position that's full-time with salary and benefits for experienced attorneys to cut into the backlog in those counties. I'm not asking, I'm not coming before counsel tonight asking for that amount, and I thought in a more reasoned request for Newberry, we would ask for a one-year position that we can put on contract. An attorney, an experienced attorney, not a brand-new baby lawyer that I got to train for two years, but one that knows what they're doing in court and could come in and prosecute cases and I can give a, a good caseload to, and they can start working those cases up for court. Um, it would not include benefits. Uh, wh- what I'm looking for, in fact, over the past couple of months, I've had two very experienced attorneys that have come to me that essentially, one of them retired out of the Fifth Circuit. Columbia was one of their most experienced trial lawyers, has done murders, has done everything else, uh, under the sun, who has moved to our circuit and then retired out of that system, but is looking for some contract work. He would be outstanding. There's another lawyer in the Columbia area that lives, uh, in the Irma area that would also be good for this. So I, I do have some possibilities that I would not have to provide a full-time position to, but at least for a year, I could pay them a, a, a competitive contract amount, which we're asking for seventy thousand dollars to me to, to hire a, an experienced prosecutor who knows what they're doing in this state. That's about what the market rate is. Uh, and then after a year, we'll come back next year at this time and see how, how well we've done with that. And if we still need to, to cut into some of this, uh, COVID backlog that we've had, uh, we may ask to renew that contract. But maybe we're in a place in a year where we can address some, some other concerns. But our immediate need right now, I can't stress this anymore, is just for manpower. I mean, I, I can't have one, one lawyer who's very experienced, Margaret Boykin's been working here for a while and Taylor Daniel. I have him split between Newberry and Lawrence. So I've essentially have one and a half lawyers to handle fifteen hundred cases. That, y'all, is just, it's way too much. It's way too many cases for an attorney to handle. Uh, hopefully after a while, we can get that number down to kind of where we were before COVID after some period of time. Uh, and we can, can operate a little more efficiently. But right now, y'all, I'm in desperate need for people to be able to, because the only way you really reduce a docket is to put your nose to the grindstone and get into those cases and call the law enforcement officer that made the arrest, call the crime victims that were affected by that case, and figure out what the next steps are. Uh, we can't do that with the, the manpower we have now and be effective. And I, I really don't want to see the citizens of Newberry, uh, suffer because of this backlog that COVID's created and be in a worse position if they find themselves unfortunately as a victim of crime than they were in two years ago. And I'm asking for counsel's assistance in helping us get back to a, a good place with, uh, with our overall backlog numbers so we can help fight crime and help support law enforcement and go stand shoulder to shoulder with those guys to keep this community safe. Um, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Any questions from any member of council?
Just, just one question. You said, uh, you felt like, um, this contract individual, you'd be able to fill that position for seventy thousand a year?
I, I believe so. That would be a gracious plenty for us for a one-year position to say, I'm gonna give that attorney under contract a chunk of cases that they are tasked with, uh, handling.
And with all these cases that are outstanding, are most of these people on bail?
Uh, good many of them are. I, I, I can't give you an exact number of that fifteen hundred warrants, how many, that's warrants, not defendants. But how many defendants are sitting in the detention center versus, uh, you know, usually I, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, if you could help me with that. Typically, we're running in the Newberry jail around a little over a hundred.
I think it's down to about sixty. The COVID era caused, the, the, the judges were encouraged, um, to keep everybody out of jail if they could. And so I think it's actually down to around sixty now because of the COVID bonding, which is much different.
Which is, which is unfortunate.
Going with it. It is a bit of a concern that if you have too much of a window here, that you've got a lot of people on bond that, um, may potentially be harmful for us.
And I will say this, when, when somebody's out on bond and they reoffend, and we're not at the initial bond hearings, because usually they're set by magistrate judge before we even know about the case, unless the agency calls us and asks us to attend the bond, initial bond setting. But if we have those out on bond that reoffend, uh, we're, we've been very reactive to revoke, move, ask the court to revoke those bonds. Now, if a judge does it or not, that's a, another question, but we, we are pushing hard to, when people reoffend out on bond, to have them lock back up and have their bond revoked. Now during COVID, there were people reoffended three, four, five times and the judges weren't revoking anybody. And it was very unfortunate. That's why we saw a rise in crime, honestly. And our numbers are still, uh, being driven by a lot of that, and it's, it's, uh, unfortunate. But I will say, we have empty bed space at the jail now, and hopefully, you know, I've been telling the judges that, we don't have a jail overcrowding problem. That's a myth. We don't have it at Department of Corrections. We don't have it in any county detention center that I know of right now in overcrowding problem. We have plenty of bed space. So anybody who's out there saying, well, our jails are overcrowded, not accurate. So we, we want to put the dangerous ones behind bars and keep them behind bars so, uh, you know, we can keep them from going out and reoffending. But I need people to do that. Mr. Hip, Mr. Vice Chairman, as you well know, we, we need warm bodies in those seats. So thank you all so much.
Are you saying though, that majority of this backlog is created because of the COVID situation?
Uh, yes, sir. Absolutely. The backlogs in our courts here, and then what, what Mr. Chairman brought up with the bonding out of the, the repeat offenders, there again, that creates more cases. You put them back out on the streets and they reoffend, and that creates a new case for that same one person, so, uh...
And you're asking for seventy thousand dollars one time upfront, no recurring costs?
Th- this year, that's correct. And next year, uh, Mr. Williams, we'd probably re- try to reevaluate and see if, okay. I don't know that one year's gonna fix it, but I thought the better, the more reasoned approach for counsel, especially with the ARPA money that has been made available from the federal government to possibly allow the, the federal money to, to help us kick the can down the road and get some people in the door.
That was my question as to whether we could potentially use that money for that.
We can certainly take a look at that, at least check to see.
I was wondering if there was any grants for that too.
Yes, and I, I will say, uh, and this is an interesting question. We had to look this up for the Greenwood and Lawrence requests, but the, the Treasury Department has specifically said on their website, there's a couple different provisions that allow for personnel to help address court backlogs that have occurred as a result of, of the COVID, uh, pandemic. So this, the ARPA money absolutely can be used. We checked that, the legality of that, and if it falls under that, it can.
Good. Uh, the only other question, I, I was correct, you know, seventy, the average population is a little over seventy in our jail, so about seventy-four. Uh, the only other question I would have is, do you think that the court administration would grant more court time? Because it's kind of self-defeating if you don't have anywhere to go with these defendants if you do work the cases up.
Mr. Chairman, we had more court time this past six months than we've ever had in Newberry. And quite honestly, the, the problem is, you know, my, Margaret's over there trying to get cases ready, and she doesn't hardly have enough time between terms. So they almost gave us too much this last time. But if I get a new, uh, attorney to work court to help her and Taylor, uh, I think we could, we could use the type of terms that we have.
Wonderful.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much, Solicitor. We appreciate your time and appreciate you coming over.
Appreciate it.
Um, next is his adversary. Mr. Charles Werner, who is our public defender, does a fine job at it.
Hello, I'm Charles Werner. I'm the public defender for Newberry County, have been since two thousand and five as the full-time public defender. I am the only public defender in Newberry County. I will say, my junior year, I grew up in Newberry. I was the second string receiver of the Newberry High School Bulldogs. Referee Johnson called, holding on me on two consecutive plays, on running plays, and I got booted down to third string and never, um, recovered my high school career.
He's scarred for life.
Two holdings on two running calls where he split in. Um, the, um, I have been asked, the, the, this, we have not put in a request, but I was notified I do have superiors out of the Greenwood Circuit Public Defender's Office. The, if there is money in the ARP grant, the Public Defender's Office would intend to hire a second full-time position of public defender for Newberry County. The, so on behalf of the Public Defender's Office, I have been instructed, I'm asking for a hundred thousand dollars over three years. That would fund fringe benefits and, um, salary. The, so the total request is three hundred thousand dollars over three years. That would be used to hire a full-time public defender. The Public Defender's Office, I, I will say, every time you see a solicitor in court, there is a public defender in court. The, o- on estimate, I am anywhere from sixty to eighty-five percent of the defense of all of the cases in Newberry County. The, that is in the felony court, on the main general sessions court, that is in the juvenile family court, that is, um, probation violations. And on, on top of what the solicitor is does, the Public Defender's Office now has to represent the, um, all DUI clients who apply and are qualified and all domestic violence clients who are qualified. And, um, a- and that is where the public defender appears, that generally the solicitor's office does not. That, that is generally, those are cases that are police prosecuted cases. So, um, so we, we represent everybody, sixty to eighty-five percent of the docket in the felony cases, sixty, uh, the magistrate courts and the, almost the entire juvenile dockets, which are probably ten juveniles a month. The, not a real problem, I don't think, with court time lately. The, I, I would say that the budgeting, the prosecutors, I, I agree with everything he said. Here's my warning, how, however you do funding on criminal defense, it is a funnel. You, you can fund the top part of the funnel as much as you want to. They still all come through me or the Public Defender's Office. It's because everybody's entitled to the attorney. So you can have ten prosecuting attorneys. The funnel needs to be, um, accommodate the fact that the, the courts will not take pro se non-represented cases. The, um, i- if you overfund the top and you don't consider the bottom of them, you will have a bottleneck of, of many prosecutors still having to go through one attorney. And I am the, we are the only county that has the one attorney as public defender. And I, I will say it was working fairly well pre-COVID. Newberry was probably for two years, the, the, the highest performing county in the state in terms of clearance of cases. We were the, the Supreme Court used to print out the eighty percent, used to be the benchmark number. You had to, the solicitors had to clear eighty percent of their docket within a year, or they would get reported. The Newberry was the only county for two years that met that for every year. COVID happened. The Supreme Court largely locked down the courthouses and said, no big crowds, no roll calls, no jury trials. And, and the solicitor is right about his backlog of numbers. The magistrates were encouraged not to hold people on bonds except for violent crimes. And I, I'm not necessarily agreeing with the solicitor that people out on bond create more crimes or get back in more trouble, but it, it is more time-consuming to resolve a client who's not in jail than who is in jail. Uh, people in jail typically want to resolve their cases quicker than people who don't want to come to the courthouse at all. The, um, I agree with Mr. Johnson, the, the, the running number for the Newberry jail is about seventy, has traditionally been seventy. And, and that is kind of what, and about half of that is people who've already been found guilty in magistrate's court. Half of it would be pending cases, already been found guilty, they're on public works on one section. But seventy is probably the traditional running number of the jail. Pre-COVID, they usually ran about a hundred, a hundred and ten. It, it is much lower now, but seventy. And in candor, they don't want too much lower than that because they, they do have federal funding that they have to have inmates in jails or they don't, you know, get government assistance for low numbers. But, um, the, if there is money in the ARP budget, the Public Defender's Office would intend to hire for three years a full-time public defender to get the numbers back to what it would be manageable. Numbers is a backlog, and, and I, I regret to say this as public defender, there is a spike in violent crime in Newberry right now. Though, I mean, that's, maybe COVID-related, maybe not, but, but people are shooting each other lately. And, and we have what I would classify as traditional violent crimes more than we've had. Um, so, I mean, the, the new cases come and are, the drug, we got drug cases too, but, but, um, just a noticeable spike in violent gun crimes in Newberry County, uh, which we hadn't had. If there's any questions, I'm available to ask.
Thank you, Mr. Werner. We, we'll turn that over. Any questions from any of the one on council?
I have a quick question. You, you're, uh, asked for a hundred thousand a year for three years. Uh, the solicitor mentioned, uh, a contract personnel. Would you be talking about contract personnel or are you requesting full-time county employee with all benefits?
The Public Defender's Office is requesting a full-time employee. What the salary would be, would be how they would calculate a salary with the fringe benefits, but it would be a total hundred thousand dollar request. And then the, the seniors in the Public Defender's Office in Greenwood would have to budget salary slash fringe benefits out of that. We are requesting a full-time Public Defender's Office for Newberry County. full-time Public Defender's Office for Newberry County, the, not a one-time contract for one year. However, I have been told that if there is less money in the budget, but there is something available, that they could use anything to hire anybody, and they would find somebody good to help move cases as well.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, thank you, council members.
Thank you, Mr. Werner. Appreciate you being here. Appreciate your work. Last, but certainly not least, is Mike Pizzano, Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This information was presented to the Finance Committee on the 28th for consideration in this budget process. This regards the Newberry County Transfer Station. The first slide represents the total tonnage, which is 76,600 and change, divided between commercial tonnage and residential. So, we have 47,559 of residential and 29,042 tons of commercial. The cost to run at the tipping station, or I should say, the transfer station, our cost to tip at the landfill were $2,204,481. Our revenues at the transfer station for fiscal year 2021 were $1,171,438. That results in a shortfall of $1,033,043. Currently, the city of Newberry pays no tipping fees for commercial trash. So, during this examination, we identified a number of users who dump over 1,000 tons at the transfer station per year, and we've identified them as mega-users. We've spoken to a consultant recommending a surcharge of $2 per ton for anything over 1,000 tons. Just for comparison's sake, the closest user that we had to this handful of mega-users dumped 737 tons, and we have 67 commercial users. If you average them out, not accounting for the mega-users, it's about 45 tons per year. So, you can see the big jump up to the thousand. Also, in addition to the surcharge for anything over 1,000 tons for the commercial, we're recommending a increase in the base fee per ton from 49 a ton to 51. Projected revenue for fiscal year '23, which would include charging the city of Newberry for commercial trash only, not residential, implementing the surcharge for the mega-users and increasing the base fee, will hopefully generate revenue of $1,779,333, which still leaves us with a shortfall of $425,149. Also, that, there's a small note in there that could go up due to fuel And this is just a chart showing the tonnage, and we've got it broken down for city of Newberry, other commercial users, and then we broke out the mega-users. And you can see the tonnage, they're very small, kind of hard to see, because we're comparing that to the larger dollar figures. But with a base increase of 51 a ton, you know, that would increase us to 51,000 for the city of Newberry, 379,899 for the other commercial users, and 204,000 for the mega-users. And that's on the base fee. When you get over into the mega-users, city of Newberry would be included in that. They would increase 187,148. The other mega-users on the commercial end would jump up to 957,286. So, that's where we get our total numbers in the last column, and it would increase the city of Newberry by 238,148. That's taken the base, including the surcharge, and totaling them, and the remaining commercial users would be 179,000, or I'm sorry, 379, my glasses are not working well, 379,899. And for the other mega-users, $1,061,286. No, that's a lot of numbers. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Mike. We appreciate your presentation.
Thanks, sir.
Item number three on the agenda is ordinance number 3042022, which is ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the county of Newberry adopted June 30, 2016, as to amend the zoning map acting on a request to amend the official zoning map established and codified in chapter 153 of the County of Newberry Code of Ordinances as to rezone three real estate parcels totaling 13 and 91 hundreds acres designated as TMS Parcels Number 639-8, 639-87, and 639-88, from RS Single Family Residential to R2 Rural. Any changes since the last time? Okay. The first item under this item is the public hearing, so I declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone here to speak at the public hearing on this matter? Hearing none unless there's an exception from council. I'll declare the public hearing closed. The next subcategory of this is the third and final reading. Is there a motion that this be third and final reading? Motion by Mr. Reader, second by Mr. Shealy. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise. It carries unanimously. Item number four on the agenda is ordinance number 03052022, which is an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the county of Newberry adopted June 30, 2016. So, it's to amend the zoning map acting on a request to amend the official zoning map established and codified in chapter 153 of the County of Newberry Code of Ordinances. So, it's to rezone one real estate parcel totaling one and 49 hundreds acres designated as TMS Parcels Number 340-2-21, from RS Single Family Residential to R2 Rural. Any changes on this one? Now, we come to the public hearing on this ordinance. I now declare the public hearing open, and we have signed up for this. Is, Mike, is it probing?
Yeah, mine was the first one.
Oh, okay. You signed up under this one. I apologize.
No, that's all right. I'm sorry. I just wanted to say, do you want me to go over?
Yeah, you have to. Please come up to the microphone. Yes.
Um, but we're looking forward to living in Newberry County. And I wanted to just thank you and everybody that we have worked with through this process. You couldn't ask for nicer, more respectful, helpful people. And so, I wanted to thank the council for everything, and you voting to approve. Thank you.
Wonderful. We don't get to hear those kind of things very often, so it's very pleasing.
We appreciate y'all.
Can you say that again?
Anybody else who would like to speak at the public hearing for this ordinance? Hearing none unless there's an exception from council. We will move to make the public hearing closed. Sub item number B on this agenda item is the third and final reading. Is there a motion that this be third and final reading? Motion by Mr. Hip, second by Ms. Airwood. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise. It carries unanimously. Item number five on our agenda is ordinance number 4-06-2022, which is an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the county of Newberry adopted June 30, 2016. So, it's to amend the zoning map acting on a request to amend the official zoning map established and codified in chapter 153 of the County of Newberry Code of Ordinances. So, it's to rezone one real estate parcel totaling 19 and 72 hundreds acres located at 1001 Macedonia Church Road between Doc Fulmer Road and Living Inn Road. Advocate has asked to rezone to R2 Rural from RS Single Family Residential. The tax map number is 65361. Come forward and tell us about this, please.
The property owners of 1001 Macedonia Church Road are asking to rezone their property from RS Single Family Residential to R2 Rural for the use of a small hobby farm to include a small number of chickens. The property is located within the Lake Development overlay of the future land use map, which comes from our current comprehensive plan. This rezoning does comply with the future land use map. There was no opposition at the rezoning, and Planning Commission did recommend the rezoning.
Okay. You have heard the report. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Is there a motion related to this ordinance?
So, move first reading.
Motion, first reading by Mr. Hip. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Shealy. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise. Carries unanimously. Item number six on our agenda is executive session. We have two executive session matters, both of them covered under section 30-4-70, subsection A of the Code of Laws of South Carolina, as amended in 1976. Item number one is the discussion of negotiations instance proposed contractual arrangements and proposed sale or purchase of property, the receipt of legal advice, where the legal advice retains to, I'm sorry, relates to a pending threatened or potential claim or other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, settlement of legal claims, or the position of the public agency in other adversary situations involving the assertion against the agency of a claim. Subsection two, which is the second executive session, will be for discussion of matters relating to proposed location, expansion, or the provision of services encouraging location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body. We have two items in there. One is Project Viking, and the other is Project PBNJ. Is there a motion that we move into executive session? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Ms. Airwood. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise. We unanimously move into executive session.
Newbury County Council made an executive session for the mentioned reasons before going into executive session and the pursuant sections of law, no action was taken. Would there be motions based on our executive session?
I'll make a motion that we give the economic development director and the county administrator the liberty to negotiation with project PBNJ in regards to their settlement here.
Okay, there's a motion to give them the authority based on our discussions in executive session is their second.
Right.
Second by Mr. Shealy, all in, I'm sorry, any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, opposed likewise, it carries unanimously, is there other motions?
Make a motion that we give the same liberty with the economic development director and the county administrator to negotiate with project PBNJ as discussed.
Motion and a motion that we give them authority within, for project PBNJ is their second.
Right.
Second by Ms. Shee, Ms. Airwood is their discussion. second. Second by Ms. Shee, Ms. Airwood is their discussion. Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands and opposed likewise. It too carries unanimously. Next on our agenda is public comments. It looks like we emptied the place, so no public, no one had signed up for public comments. Comments from the county administrator get pretty easy since he is out with his wife and soon to be born child. There are comments or requests from council members. Mr. Shealy?
No comment.
Mr. Livingston?
No comment.
Ms. Airwood?
No comment.
Reverend Currie?
No comment.
Reader?
No comment.
Yep.
No comment.
Future meetings. Executive session on April the 12th, 2022 at 5:00 p.m. Budget work session on April the 20th at 4:00 p.m. Our regular scheduled council meeting will be April the 20th at 6:00 p.m. There will be a meeting of the executive committee on April 25th at 6:00 p.m. And a budget work session on April 26th at 6:00 p.m. Is there a motion that we adjourn? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Reverend Currie, all in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise. We stand adjourned.